Welcome everyone to the first ever MDA Virtual Town Hall Meeting. I'm your MDA President, Michelle Tulek-Gurecki, and it's wonderful that so many of you could zoom in tonight by computer, by phone or tablet to join me and our panelists for what I hope will be a very informative program for all of our members. Tonight offers a unique opportunity for us to meet using a relatively new technology involving some telecommunication. Communication is one of the three areas of focus I chose to concentrate efforts on this year. We are all so busy and it's difficult sometimes to be available at an in-person meeting. The distance is sometimes far and we have other responsibilities. Zoom makes it possible for us to communicate from wherever we are, whether that's at our home, at our offices, traveling, or really anywhere that you have some reliable Wi-Fi. Zoom is currently being used for some committee meetings and for some work groups. And it's a great way for us to connect the state leadership with component leadership. For instance, since governance changes occurred, all of our MDA trustees are at large, representing all members and not a specific component. With Zoom, components have been able to contact the MDA and have a trustee or trustees attend a component meeting live. The trustee could be present at a meeting anywhere in the state without leaving their home or office. Wow. This gives the component a chance to get to know the trustees and get information directly from them. And it helps us address any communication gaps from state to component or vice versa. That's pretty exciting and it helps our member dentist succeed with direct communication with state leadership. In fact, the MDA House of Delegates will have an opportunity similar to what you're having tonight to get an update from some of the trustees during an upcoming Zoom experience in February. There are so many possibilities to use this new technology for communication. So I thank you for participating with us tonight. And I ask you to spread the word about how the MDA is working to make communication personal and easy, no matter where you're at. So let's get on with our program. Tonight, we will talk about several topics, including new member resources, annual session highlights, some legislative updates, the upcoming Mission of Mercy, and the opioid crisis in Michigan. At the end, we will have some time for questions and answers. However, you can ask a question at any time by clicking on the Q&amp;A button on the bottom of your screen. You will be keeping track of all the questions and will answer them at the end of the presentations. There's also a chat button that you may have noticed at the bottom of your screen. Use this feature to chat among yourselves or to comment if you are having a technical issue like not being able to hear. The panelists are not monitoring the chat, but staff will be and will try to help you resolve any technical issues. All right then, let's begin with our first speaker. Ms. Karen Burgess, our very own MDA Executive Director, is excited to fill you in on some of the newest resources designed to help you, our member dentist succeed. Karen?
Thank you, Dr. Tulek-Gurecki. I appreciate that. I'd like to start by briefly mentioning three new publications. We have a couple of them that are on legal topics, which is very important to our members. The e-publication "Most Asked Legal Questions: Answer the Questions That Members Give Us the Most", in a compilation of Dan Schulte's legal articles from the MDA Journal. The second legal resource is a new edition of the Dentist's Guide to Michigan Law. You can get that in hard copy or as a free ebook. Plus, we've also published the 2017 MDA Dental Practice Fee Survey Report. It's available on request to members only. We also have the Staff Compensation and Benefits Survey available, which was published in 2016. In terms of continuing education, we have two new helpful resources. The first is a one-hour online CE program on human trafficking. It's available on-demand on the MDA website. It meets the state of Michigan's new requirement for one-time-only training for healthcare providers and is just $25 for members. More than 500 members have taken the course so far. And as you know, online CE is really growing in popularity. So the MDA launched a partnership with the World Continuing Education Alliance to bring members access to hundreds of online CE courses. Of all those available, we selected the ones that are ADA SERP and AGD PACE approved. But I'm most excited about the fact that the MDA has expanded its resources for the dental team. We figure that one way to help members succeed is to help their staff do a great job. First of these is a new e-newsletter for staff called "Front and Center" that comes out every other month. We also offer disc communications training to enhance the effectiveness of your entire team. It's a great way for a team to learn about their different styles of communication, break down and eliminate miscommunication, and build understanding and morale. We're finding that people with the training can apply what they learned when communicating with patients as well. And it includes an online assessment plus a 90-minute education program right in your own office. Finally, we also have the brand-new MDA Certified Dental Business Professional Program. This is a pay-as-you-go continuing education program to increase the knowledge and impact of your front-office staff. We've identified the key topics that the front-office staff must know and built a 30-hour program. Some of these are in-person classes. Some of them are available online. There are opportunities to take the classes throughout the year and staff have three years to complete the program in order to receive their certification. The cost of the program is just the cost of the CE and, as I said, you only pay as the classes are taken. Each staff member who enrolls gets a binder and other materials to help them keep track of their progress. We have dozens of front-office staff who are enrolled in the program today. So for more information about any of these new resources, just call the Michigan Dental Association, visit our MDA website, or you can email membership@michigandental.org. Thanks. I'll throw it back to Dr. Tulek-Gurecki now to talk about the annual session.
I just will unmute my microphone. So at this cart, next on our agenda is talking about the 2018 MDA Annual Session. And I wanted to let you all know that registration is now open on the MDA website. So don't delay. Make sure to register both yourself and your dental team because this year's meeting will be one you won't want to miss. This year, we will be in our state capital, beautiful Lansing, Michigan. The meeting will take place April 25th through the 28th at the Lansing Center. You know, the MDA always puts on an outstanding meeting and this year will be no different. It is Michigan's leading dental continuing education and dental expo event, so bring your whole team. There will be new courses this year that will help your staff complete requirements towards the new Certified Dental Business Professional Program that Ms. Burgess just mentioned. In addition, this year, we are offering over 50 different CE courses for both the dentist and the dental team. There will be close to 200 exhibitors. It's a great opportunity to check out products and services before taking the big plunge and investing in them. It's also a great place to get answers to your questions about new products, equipment, and various services. We are again offering a new dentist course track plus another new dentist network lounge event. I hope we have some of the new dentists participating tonight and that we will see you there. The keynote speaker this year is Phil Gwoki. His presentation is complimentary to all our attendees and you won't want to miss his presentation on exploring differences between generations in the workplace. If you'd like a little preview, he has some great talks on YouTube that you can go ahead and listen to and get a little taste of what he's going to be talking about with us. We have many outstanding course speakers, including Dr. Marie Fluent, Dr. Bernice Co., Dr. Carol Ann Murdock-Kinch, Lois Banta, Dr. Lou Graham, and our own MDA Legal Capital, Dan Schulte, and many others. I also hope that I see you at this year's President's Event, which will take place at the Cooley Law School Stadium. It will include some food stations, fun trivia, and life-size yard games. And there will also be entertainment and on-field experiences. Dress up in your favorite team garb and come out and have a blast at the ballpark with us. Needless to say, annual session will be the place to be, so make sure you register today and I hope to see a lot of you there. Next up is our MDA President of Advocacy and Professional Relations, Mr. Bill Sullivan, who will give you an update on legislative issues. Phil?
Thank you, Dr. Gurecki. The first issue I'm going to discuss tonight is the sales tax on dental prosthetics. This was probably one of the issues we heard the most about from members since I've been at the MDA. We've received well over 200 phone calls on this issue. This is something that happened the middle of last year where the state made the determination that dental prosthetics should have the sales tax applied to them. The dental lab started applying the tax in July. We found out about it. We went to work on it immediately and bills were introduced and it got through the legislative process fairly quickly. And as of December 28th of last year, bills were signed into law that will remove the sales tax or that have removed the sales tax from dental prosthetics. So watch for that from the labs. They should no longer be collecting sales tax on dental prosthetics. In addition to that, sales tax that has already been paid, you can get refunded. So the way you do this is you ask the dental lab to refund what you paid for the sales tax. The lab should refund your money. The lab will then get reimbursed from the state. But it's very important to remember that you do not contact the state for your refund. You do that with the dental lab. And if you have any questions about that, you can give us a call at the MDA, myself, or Josh Kluzak, and we can walk you through the process. And if you're encountering any problems, we have a number that we can give you to call at the Treasury Office. The next topic I wanted to talk about is dental therapists. This is Senate Bill 541. This is a topic that the MDA as well as the ADA were opposed to the creation of dental therapists and we've been working to make sure that that doesn't happen. Unfortunately, in October of last year, the Senate did pass Senate Bill 541 and it is now over in the House of Representatives. It's in the House Health Policy Committee. We have a little bit of a different situation over in the House, which is more beneficial to us. That is, the Chair of the House Health Policy Committee, Representative Vaupel, does not support the bill. He is strongly against the creation of therapists, which is good for us. In addition to that, we have met with every member of the House Health Policy Committee and to the best of our determination right now, they do not have the votes to get it out of committee. At the same time, we've been meeting with the representatives in Lansing. Meetings are being set up in the districts where dentists are meeting with their legislators in the district. While the situation is better for us right now in the House, it's not something that we can rest on. We've got to keep up the pressure and we've got to continue to work to make sure that the representatives don't change their minds on this issue. And we've got to do this through the end of the year because the term ends in December of this year. And after the election, this is a term I don't know if you've heard before, it's called a lame duck session. That's the period of time after the election through the end of the year where people are leaving office, moving on, and it's a very dangerous time for legislation getting passed because deals are cut and you don't know what's going to happen. So we've got to remain alert. You know, the feedback that we get from dentists in the district who talk to their legislators is very important. So I would really encourage you to participate in the in-district meetings and talking with your legislators and letting us know about how those go. Now, one question that has come up involved, somebody received a question from one of their legislators regarding, "Why aren't there more organizations opposed to this bill?" And the answer is that there are and the information has been supplied to legislators. In fact, I know the one in question, I sent the information to her again so that she did have it. One of the things you've got to keep in mind with legislators is that sometimes they forget. They get a whole lot of information and a lot of times when it's not positioned that they're in favor of or that they support, they tend to forget. So we will always be reminding them, but we do have a list of organizations that are helping our side out and opposing the bill. Now, I'll just read a few of those for you. The American Dental Association, I know there's been, the proponents of the bill have insinuated that the American Dental Association is not really opposing mid-levels. Well, that is not true. They are opposed to them. In addition, Michigan State Medical Society, the Michigan Osteopathic Association, the Michigan Dental Assistance Association, the Michigan Orthodontist, and there's several others. And these are all on a list that have been provided to legislators. And as I said, we will resend those as we need to as well. The next issue I wanted to talk about is something that we're going to be working on this year and it involves what's called a disallow policy. And for those of you who have experienced this, you know what I'm talking about. But for those of you who may not, what a disallow policy is, is when an insurance company denies a covered service. They say they're not going to pay for it, but once they do that, in addition, they prohibit the provider from charging the patient anything. So the only recourse that the patient has is to go to another dentist if they want to get the procedure. We feel that's blatantly unfair. It's interference in the patient-doctor relationship. And we are working on having a bill introduced this year that would prohibit that type of policy being in dental contracts. The final point I wanted to bring up is that we're in an election year this year and the entire state legislature is up for election. The governor, Secretary of State, the Attorney General, and every member of Congress. So it's going to be a crazy year. There's going to be a lot of politicking. There's going to be a lot of people running against each other and people who've supported us are going to be running against each other. So it's a very delicate situation and it can get crazy at times, but we will be watching that and acting accordingly. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Deb Peters, who will talk about the Mission of Mercy.
Thanks, Bill. I appreciate that. In the time that I've been allotted, I'm going to talk about the Mission of Mercy. But I do want to say that I hope by the end of this, my goal is to have the participants listening today or anyone else who watches this, to participate in some format, whether you sign up to volunteer or you contribute financially. So this is now our fourth Mission of Mercy and through all of our outreach over the last many years, I'm sure everyone knows what the Mission of Mercy is or MOM for short, but when is it? So get these in your calendar. Mission of Mercy is coming up first weekend in June. Setup day, Thursday, May 31st. Two treatment days, June 1st and 2nd, and then a takedown day on June 3rd. Where is it? Mission of Mercy is at Calvin College in Grand Rapids. Many great reasons to come over to Grand Rapids. It's my hometown. But I hope you take the opportunity to come over and help out in this wonderful event. One of the best things I want to say about the time that I've spent at Mission of Mercy is how it makes you feel. You know, we can all participate and do a variety of work to help the underserved in our offices. It happens in clinics. Some of us travel and do this. But this is a wonderful way to connect with your colleagues throughout the state. It's exciting for our dental team members. Please bring your team. Bring your spouse. Bring your neighbor. Invite a patient. Last time we had a Mission of Mercy, my team was there and one of my assistants brought her husband. He was so thrilled. He's signed up again to come this year and she's signed on. You know, she's working on our team. So it's one of these opportunities where we can all give a chance to give back. You're too busy that day? No problem. Log on to Michigan Dental. Log on to our website. Go under the Foundation and they would appreciate any financial support you could get. Though it's volunteer work, the lab is set up. We do Sarah Crowns even, and there's a wide variety. It does take a considerable amount of funds to put on a Mission Mercy. And I'm proud to say that our fundraising goal is well ahead of schedule with some dedicated volunteers, but we're not there yet. We have a goal of 180,000. And if that date doesn't work for you, I'm going to hopefully inspire you to want to log on and donate today. One of my favorite things at the Mission of Mercy is the wall of thank yous. So you get done, you're tired because you don't have your favorite fur or maybe you're bent over doing an extraction without your favorite instruments and you walk back and you see a handwritten note from a volunteer. That can really touch anybody and it means a lot to me. It will mean a lot to you. And so I know we have participants on here today who are former MOM. I know we have our local lead on today. So you know, I just want to encourage everyone that this is our chance to let our whole association shine. It's our chance to work with our colleagues throughout the whole state. It's your chance to really make an impact. So again, those dates, first weekend in June, Grand Rapids, Michigan. Sign up. Most importantly, we'll be starting next week beginning February 1st. So look for that. Encourage people to join you. They don't need dental experience. It takes a lot of volunteers and I'd just like you to consider it. Next up to talk about the opioid crisis in Michigan is Dr. Vits Benavidna.
Well, good evening, everybody. Deb, I would just like to thank you for your presentation on the MOM and like to say before I start talking about opioids that I've been the chair or co-lead, I guess you could say, for the oral surgery section of the MOM for the last, what did we do it, three times or two times? I can't remember. Anyway, I've had a blast and I'm bringing all my staff this year. I'm going to be there for all four days and I'm really looking forward to it. I've talked to some people that are already looking forward to being in the oral surgery section with me and it's a great time. It's a great experience and it's very fulfilling. You see a lot of patients and do a lot of good there. So I'd encourage everybody, just like Deb asked, to sign up and talk it up and get your staff there and your colleagues there as well. So thanks. So I don't know if you all know that I am on Governor Schneider's Prescription Drug and Opioid Abuse Commission. This is my second year that I'm involved with that. It's a large commission. It's made up of about 20-plus members and they're all walks of life. There's a lot of healthcare people on there like me. There's the law enforcement. There's state police. There's people in the court system. Judge Davis, Lynda Davis, is our chairperson for our commission. And it's a huge problem. It's been in the news and more people are dying now of opioid overdose in the nation than die of car accidents and gun deaths combined. So it's a big issue right now and in Michigan, we have some pretty startling statistics that I just kind of want to go over because people are like, "Well, why is this a dental problem? Why is this our problem? Why is this a Michigan problem?" And so I'm just going to go over some statistics at first here to kind of open everybody's eyes of why this commission was created, what we're doing, and how it affects dentists. And because we're the providers and we do prescribe some opioids and I'm going to go over how much we do. So these are Michigan statistics that were put out by MDHHS, the Health and Human Services. And in Michigan, all drug deaths told from 2011 was 1,359, okay? Our population in Michigan is 10 million. But in 2015, that number jumped from 1,359 to 1,981. All opioid deaths jumped from 622 to 1,275 in the same period. Opioid prescriptions in Michigan, 2011, was 10,441,714 opioid prescriptions. That's 2011. In 2016, that jumped to over 11 million. There's only 10 million people in Michigan. So I mean, there's more opioid prescriptions than there are people in Michigan going out. That's a big problem. There's a thing called neonatal abstinence syndrome and that's when a baby is born and when they're born to an addict, the mother's been basically feeding them opioids, you know, for the term of the pregnancy. And then when they're born, they don't get any more opioids and the baby goes through withdrawal. And it's a terrible syndrome and it's very life-threatening. And 2011, there were 630 cases of that in Michigan. And in 2016, there were 927 cases of that in Michigan. So and then as far as like, you know, what does it cost to put people through rehab? It's a lot of money. And in 2011, there were 22,234 people going through publicly-funded drug treatment services. And in 2016, that number jumped to 32,473. So this is a huge monetary problem. It's a huge human problem. So statistics that are unique to Michigan, Michigan is only, Michigan's number three in the prescription of hydrocodone in the nation, only behind Texas and California. And that's not even per capita. That's actual prescriptions. So what that means is that we're prescribing a ton more of hydrocodone, i.e. Norco and Vicodin, than we really need. It's ridiculous how much hydrocodone there is in Michigan. Michigan is known as a source state for hydrocodone, so it's being diverted out of Michigan to other states. And if you look at, we're number three behind California and Texas. California and Texas have way larger populations than we do in Michigan, yet we're barely behind them in hydrocodone prescribing. So that's the reason why. And now some people would say like, "Well, you know, dentists aren't the bad actors here." We're not prescribing a lot of those opioids. Well, we are. And in fact, in JADA, in our own journal, in July of 2016, there was an article published called "Dental Opioid Prescribing and Multiple Opioid Prescriptions Among Dental Patients." And the data cited in that article was from South Carolina MAPS program. MAPS is a program, and I'll go over that later, where you register for that. And you're basically, as a provider, you're tracked on how much prescribing you're doing for controlled substances. So the South Carolina data showed that 42% of the opioid prescriptions were done by dentists, okay? And we only make up 9% of the prescribers. So as 9% of the prescribers, we're prescribing 42% of the opioids. And another startling statistic is that of the dental opioid prescriptions, 12 and a half percent of those are going to children. Children is defined in this article as being under 21. And they are very susceptible. Children and adolescents are very susceptible to opioid addiction and later abuse if they're prescribed at such a young level. So it's a big problem. It's a dental problem and we have to change our ways. And I'm trying to get the word out to our community. I have a lecture that I gave to McComb and I gave it to, as one of the fundraisers for the MOM. I gave a lecture, a CE lecture for that. And anybody that wants me to come and do it for their component, I'd be happy to do it. Just let me know. It's about an hour and a half long. But it's a huge dental problem. We have to address it and we have to change our prescribing ways. In Michigan, what's been done from our commission is we basically make recommendations to the governor. And then Governor Schneider tries to change the law and enact certain things to help the cause of less addiction, less prescribing, and less deaths. That's the big metric right there. So personally, I'm one of the chairs of the subcommittees of the Prescription Drug Commission and I'm the prevention chair. And what that means is we are trying to come up with ideas to eliminate diversion, drug diversion, and over-prescribing. And we're trying to enact take-back programs so that you can properly dispose of the opioids that you may have and that your patients may have and not know what to do with them once they don't use them. So some of the laws and some of the legislative things that have been happening in very recent times, I'm going to go over all the bills that have been passed and have been signed by the governor and are now public acts that relate to prescribing of opioids. and are now public acts that relate to prescribing of opioids. And this is, this is going to affect, this is going to affect you as a dentist if you do prescribe opioids. So the first one is HB 4406. And so that's going to affect not only you, but it's going to affect your kids because that's a bill that, that is going to put opioid education in the schools. And it's going to put it in there at a pretty young age as well. So by, by 2000, July 2018, our commission has to come up with some curriculum that we can recommend that the schools put in place for educating on the dangers of prescribing opioid, opioids and drug abuse. And in July of 2019, it's required that the schools have it in place. And by, by the school year 2019, 2020, they'll actually be teaching it in the schools. So that, that's one big thing that's coming at a very grassroots level. HB 4408 is the next one and that was signed by the governor. And that, beginning in June of 2018, so June of this year, before prescribing an opioid to a patient, you're going to, especially in particular a minor patient, you're going to have to discuss with that minor's parent or guardian the potential risks of addiction and overdose associated with the controlled substance. Not only that, but you're going to have to have them sign a consent form that says you did that. And that's going to have to be, become part of the patient's, the minor's medical record. Also regarding children, you won't be able to prescribe an opioid for more than a 72-hour supply. So they're trying to cut down on the number of days. Addiction really starts to come into play when you prescribe an opioid for someone and they're on it longer than five to seven days. So they're trying to cut it off. Originally, they wanted, the people in the legislature wanted to do it, you know, a three to five day supply and that's it. But some people lobbied hard to get that extended and it got extended out to a seven-day supply. So you're going to have to provide information to your patients when you do prescribe opioids about the dangers of opioid addiction and how to properly dispose of the unused opioids that they use. By the way, how much is used? I'm an oral surgeon. I used to prescribe routinely 20 Vicodin plus a refill for all my third molar patients. Who's my third molar patients? They're, you know, 17, 18, 19-year-old kids. Studies show that they, they take eight of them. So what happens to the other 32? They get diverted, they get used, they get abused, they get sold, they go to places where they shouldn't. So there has to be proper prescribing. We have to limit our prescribing. We have to tell people how to dispose of it and use it properly to make sure it doesn't get diverted. So then also that same bill, they're putting in some sanctions that will go into place if you don't comply with, with these new, these new laws and regulations for, for prescribers regarding opioid prescribing. Then there's SB 166, which allows us to only, only, it limits the amount of pills, of supply that we can give to patients to a three-day supply. And I'm sorry, if you, if you prescribe anything greater than a three-day supply, it will require you to be enrolled in MAPS. And so there, so MAPS is a Prescription Drug Monitoring Program, PDMP. And a lot of prescribers use that currently. And you're in it, whether you know it or not, if you've prescribed Tylenol 3 or Vicodin or Norco, you're in it. So when a pharmacist fills a prescription, they, they type into MAPS, you know, who the prescriber is, who the patient is, and that becomes part of the MAPS system. That's, that's a searchable thing. And when you sign up for MAPS as a provider, you can search by your patient, you can search by patient name and, and their birthday and find out how many prescriptions they've, they've had in the last two years of opioids. And that's very helpful because the study that I referred to earlier in JADA showed that a lot of patients that are prescribed an opioid by a dentist already have an existing prescription. It's a fair amount of patients, actually. The number, to be exact, is 20.9%. So some of these patients, you're given, you know, 10 Vicodin to. As a patient, maybe after you do a root canal or take a tooth out or do some periostechnic surgery, they've already got a prescription or maybe two or three. And that's helpful for you to know, you know, it's easy to, it's easy to refer to MAPS. It's easy to plug a patient's name in if you think you're going to prescribe them an opioid and just see what they've been getting over the last number of days or weeks or even years. See how big a problem they may have. And you don't want to really contribute to that problem. So it's helpful for you to learn how to prescribe better, make better decisions on prescribing. So beginning in June of this year, 2018, before prescribing or dispensing a controlled substance to a patient, a licensed prescriber shall register with MAPS. So that's SB 166. So you're going to have to participate with it if you prescribe. It's easy to sign up for. There's no reason not to. Nobody's out, you know, trolling through these MAPS records, looking, looking at you, the dentist prescribing somebody, you know, pain relief for, for your procedures. They're looking for, you know, bad actors. And if you're not a bad actor, then they're not going to look at you. So then there's another one, SB 167, which basically says you have to have a relationship with a person, like a, they have to be a patient before you prescribe them a narcotic, an opioid. So, and there's going to be penalties if they're not. So you can't, you can't have like bogus patients that you're prescribing to. And again, that just goes, trying to eliminate some bad actors. SB 274 is another one that will affect dentists. Prescribers should not prescribe the patient more than a seven-day supply of an opioid. Again, a little bit of redundancy here with, with some of these. But basically they're trying to decrease the number of days to eliminate potential addiction. They're trying to prevent diversion and they're, they're trying to get better disposal and better record keeping and better informed consent. So it's all good things that they're doing, I think, in the legislature. And there's no reason for, I think, us as dentists to oppose any of, any of this legislative action. So there's some, there's some other bills that are in the House right now that are similar. They're trying to shore up and strengthen some of these ideas and I'm all for them. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that there will be some mandatory CE coming down the pipe for dentists, much like our current pain, pain management CE that we have to do and our human trafficking requirement that we have to do. So there will be another facet of required CE and it'll be opioid education. And we're not quite sure whether or not it will be a one-time deal like, like the human trafficking is or whether it will be an ongoing thing like our pain management CE. But I'm not sure exactly when it's going to come down, but it's going to, our recommendation already went to Governor Schneider and Schneider in turn is going to make a, make, I don't know, some type of law that, that he's going to basically kick it to the boards, like the Board of Dentistry, the Board of Medicine, Board of Pharmacy. And they're going to, they're going to actually come up with the CE requirement. So, so that's coming down the pipe. So that's what I've been doing with the opioid crisis in Michigan and we're just trying to get, keep people healthy, keep them out of pain. And you may ask like, well, what alternatives are there, Vince, besides hydrocodone for my patient that I'm taking for wisdom teeth out? Well, the oral surgeons have put out a white paper. There's been many articles in JADA that show that ibuprofen and Tylenol are just as effective and even more effective than hydrocodone. So current recommendations are you can take up to 3,200 milligrams of ibuprofen a day for pain relief. And you can combine that with 3,000 milligrams of Tylenol per day for pain relief. So most people just get along fine with the Motrin, Motrin 800 every six hours. If they have any breakthrough pain, you can do Tylenol. And I've done that for my patients for about the last six months. I've pretty much gone opioid-free in my office. I can tell you, I'm not getting any more phone calls at night than I did before. In fact, I'm getting way less phone calls at night. Much, many of my patients are very happy. You can see the relief on their face when I'm telling the parent. The parent will ask me, well, what are you going to give Johnny post-operatively for pain management? I tell them, well, he's going to get Motrin 800. And they're like, I can't tell you how many of them say, good. You're not going to give him that Vicodin or that Norco because I don't want him to get any opioids. So people are aware of it. If you talk to your patients, if you talk to your patients, you're going to find that there's not many degrees of separation between your patient and somebody that they know that's died of an overdose. It'll either be their, their daughter or their, their husband or their parents or their cousin or their uncle, somebody. I guarantee you, if you start talking about it, you will, you will find these people. And it's, it's way more prevalent than, than, you know, you're, you're probably aware. So that's what I'm doing. We're trying to, trying to help out with reducing the opioid addiction, opioid deaths and opioid abuse. So that's the end of my talk. You can tell I'm probably pretty passionate about it. I enjoy speaking on it. And if you invite me to your component, I'd be glad to talk to you more about it. So thank you. I'm going to kick it back to Michelle Tule Grecki and I think we're going to have a little Q and A session.
Well, actually Vince, I, I noticed that there were a few questions specifically for you. I told you you'd be popular tonight, so maybe you could address those questions first.
Sure. Okay. Margaret asked me, do dentists prescribe 42% of number of Norco, Vicodin by script or quantity? So, so it's total, what we're talking about, I can, I can shoot you the article reference. Actually, it's from, it's from JADA. It's from July 2016. It's called Dental Opioid Prescribing and Multiple Opioid Prescriptions Among Dental Patients. And the statistics that I'm quoting are from page 539 of the journal. So in the MAPS data that was queried, basically said that they looked at the total opioid prescriptions and then they looked at how many dentists were, were the prescribers of those total opioid records. And so dentists did, dentists made 42% of those prescriptions. So that, that's the answer to that, to that question. So it's, we're, we're pretty up there. I mean, as far as prescribing prevalence.
Thanks Vince for all that you're doing on behalf of our members. Great, great talk tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, I think there were a few questions that you were going to address that were asked.
Yep. The first question asked, are there any studies that show the Minnesota Dental Therapist Program isn't working? And the answer to that question is no. And that's one of the things that's been challenging is we don't have any studies we can point to. However, there's a lot of evidence out there that shows that it's not working. One is the map that you've probably seen that we've put out that shows that the dental therapists are not going into rural areas of the state. That's one of the things that proponents have claimed this was going to help solve is the access to care problem in the rural areas. And the dental therapists are not going into the rural areas. They're not going into the rural areas for the same reason that other providers are because they can't make a living. And we have a map that shows this and that map is based on data that was pulled out of Minnesota. We actually got the license of every dental therapist and plotted on a map where they are practicing. And that map is available on our website under the Dental Therapist Toolkit. So if you go to the MDA website and look for Dental Therapist Toolkit, that map will be on there in addition to a bunch of other information, including the list of organizations that oppose the Dental Therapist Bill. So I believe that answers two of the questions we got. And then the final question dealt with the Delta Board Bill. Yeah, we, the, the MDA ended up losing its ability to approve Delta Board members for the simple reason that legislators didn't agree with us. However, that said, we did manage to get a bunch of protections, not a bunch, three in particular, for providers and patients. One was the timely payment. Delta Dental was not included in the timely payment law. They are now. This is something Delta has resisted being included in in the past. And while timely payment may not be a problem right now for Delta, it could be in the future. So this is an important protection to have for patients and providers. In addition, Delta was included into the genetic testing law that Michigan has. What this law does is it prohibits an insurance company from using genetic testing to base benefits on. Delta is now included in that law. And you know, it's, it's, Delta probably might not have done the right size plan that they did last year or the year before if they had been included in this, in this law. And then the final protection that we were able to get out of this is that Delta is now covered by the telemedicine law, which says that an insurance company cannot deny a service simply because it was provided through telemedicine. Prior to this, every other insurance company in the state was covered, but now Delta Dental is included in that. And I think that covers the three questions that we had.
See. I think that was the, the last question that I have. If anybody would like to ask any more questions, you're welcome to type them in right now. And if not, then I will thank you all for your time. And we appreciate you joining us tonight in this first ever live Zoom event for our members. We hope that you got a lot of information out of it. We enjoyed talking to you and we will see you soon. Thank you very much.